I would bet, like many of the people in this chamber, that especially since the election, especially if you stood for reelection and won, at some point in the quiet of your study, you said to yourself, my God, what are we going to do now? How are we going to get out of this mess? I think for many of us, myself included, it's hard to even grasp and put our arms around the magnitude of what we're going through. You heard Chairman of the Appropriations Committee, Representative Merrill, say that as we walked in this chamber today before we take any vote, both OFA and OPM, the people we rely upon to predict where we are as a state in our economy, have said that in this fiscal year, which has just over seven months to go and concludes on June 30th, we are facing a deficit between $600 million and $700 million. We heard a couple of months ago that in fiscal year 2010, we're facing a deficit of $2.7 billion. We heard that in fiscal year 2011, we're facing a deficit of $3.3 billion. And both those latter two figures haven't been updated for a couple of months, and everybody in this chamber knows that things aren't getting better, they're getting worse. As a matter of fact, if you need proof of that, when the governor put out her deficit mitigation plan in October, our deficit was, for this fiscal year, was about $300 million. As we sit here tonight, a month later, it is twice that. So I think it's fair to say conservatively, between the fiscal year we're in and the next two, we as a state are in deficit $6.6 billion. I gotta say it again, $6.6 billion. If that isn't enough, let me share with you a fantasy. Don't get excited now, but let me share with you a fantasy that underscores this nightmare. We all agree that the legislature, be it this one or the next one, within the next eight months, has to close a $6.6 billion deficit over the three fiscal years because the legislature that gets sworn in in January has to deal with a biennial budget, 2010 and 2011, combined $6 billion in deficit. Plus, if we don't do our job today or before January 7th, they will also have to deal with the $600 million deficit for this fiscal year. So we start with this universe, $6.6 billion in deficit. We know for a fact that we have in our rainy day fund $1.4 billion, and we are no doubt going to use every nickel of it. So if you start with $6.6 billion and you subtract $1.4 billion, you're left with a remaining deficit of $5.2 billion. Now here comes the fantasy. Let us assume for the sake of argument, in my fantasy world, tomorrow morning, we get a call from somebody in Washington, and they say, you know what, Connecticut? You're one of the smaller states, and by your own admission, you're not doing as bad as many other states, and you probably expected something of help from the federal government, maybe something approaching $300 to $400 million of help, but today is your lucky day, Connecticut, because in my fantasy, the federal government is going to give us $2 billion. They're just going to give it to us to help us out. That's part of my fantasy. Here's the second part of my fantasy. Every single voter in the state of Connecticut goes to the polls within a week and votes on a question that says, you know what, my state is hurting, and I want you to increase my taxes by $2 billion. That's how much we love our state. We need it, tax us more, $2 billion. Here's the reality, folks. If those two fantasies happen, and think of what the odds are that that might happen, we are still $1.2 billion in deficit. That's how bad things are. So today's the first step. The governor put together a mitigation plan and sent it to us, and we convene as what they call a lame duck legislature, to take that first step to close that gap. Now anybody who can do simple mathematics knows that if we make a cut in this fiscal year, this being November, let's say effective December 1st, that cut will have seven months to realize a savings from that cut. For the sake of argument, if we cut something that costs us $1,000 a month, then we have seven months to appreciate a savings, $7,000. If we make that same program cut in March, we only realize about $3,000 worth of savings because there's only three months left to the fiscal year. This is real basic stuff. So it behooves us to do as much as we can, as early as we can. So what do we do? We came here to consider how we could close this deficit. The governor put forth approximately $300 million in cuts, or savings, or increased revenue, to close that deficit. Chairman Merrill has said, we're only going to take about 85% or 90% of that. We're not even going to take the $300 million. That means we have about $300 million to go. When are we going to do it? Next legislative session? Are we going to leave here tonight and say we did the best we can? We'll come back and figure it out in January. Well, now, I think we're, many of us have been veterans here for a while. We know we're probably not going to do it in January, probably won't even do it in February. By the time we get around to doing anything, it'll be March, and then we'll have that much less to save because we only have three months left to the fiscal year. But somebody might say, don't worry though, we got that rainy day fund. Whatever we're in the hole by June 30th, we backfill it out of the rainy day fund. Not to worry. The problem is, we have 2010 and 2011, $6 billion to deal with, and our rainy day fund will be less by whatever we took for 2009. Folks, that is the magnitude of this problem. It is something that none of us have ever seen before. We can't say been there, done that, because folks, there is no way we could be bailed out of this mess by the federal government. There is no way, if you wanted to, you could tax yourself out of this mess. There's no way you could borrow your way out of this mess. We have to make tough, tough decisions. And my concern is, by the plan that is before us, we're not even coming close to doing that. In fact, if you look at some of the ways we make up the $285 or $265 million, they're all one-time revenues. The bulk of it is coming from the federal government, $157 million bucks, no pain there. $40 million, the next biggest item on the block, is from a tax amnesty plan. This is money people already owe us, but are reluctant to pay us because they owe interest and penalty, so we're saying, you don't have to pay the interest and penalty, just pay up your bill. That's one time, one shot. Understanding Representative Merrill, we're going to get like $5 million from the Citizens Election Fund, one shot. That's it, once. None of these cuts play themselves out into the other years, so we realize savings not only in this year, but the next year. As a matter of fact, one of the cuts that did just that in the governor's budget was this Eschitz money, the unclaimed bottled deposits. If we took them according to the way the governor had proposed, we would realize not only about $14 million worth of savings this year, but about $30 million for the next fiscal year, and on and on. But we didn't even want to do that. What I hear is we're going to create a mechanism by which we could know how much we got, but we're not going to take it. Now I gotta tell you, I've been here 16 years, I don't know how many times we've had governors that have put forth the budget which includes taking the unused deposits from bottles and cans to shore up our budget. It almost became a joke. We'd laugh about it, yeah, sure, yeah, uh-huh, seen it, no way, not going to happen. And I'm of the same opinion because there are so many policy issues that really make that not the best way in the world to get revenue. But here's what I'm afraid of. I'm afraid in five or six or seven months, this very body, out of necessity, is going to be talking about cutting a head start program, or cutting money to a provider that might help the aged, or the frail, or the elderly, or the handicapped, or the mentally handicapped. At that point, are we going to say, yeah, we gotta take that away from you, but we saved the unclaimed nickels and dimes from the Eschitz fund? I can't say that. What are we as a legislature going to say when we leave here, admitting that when we leave here, we only took care of half the problem? Wait, folks at home, wait. We gotta have our turkey. Nice Christmas holiday. We'll come back fresh in January. There's a lot of people out there that ain't waiting. They can't wait to close their business. They don't have the luxury of waiting before they tell some of their employees, we gotta lay you off. We gotta cut back your hours. You can't work here anymore. I was in the elevator the other day, and I heard two people actually talking about how at the board level, they debated whether or not to do their layoffs before the Christmas party or after the Christmas party. I went to the mechanic the other day, and I asked him, how was business? I said, I gotta presume it's not as bad as others because people aren't buying new cars, they're getting their old cars fixed. He said, Larry, to some extent, that's true, but let me tell you a story, at some point, it doesn't matter anymore. He said, I got a 67-year-old customer, former bank executive who's retired. He said he came into the shop with complaining about his car wasn't working right, wasn't sounding right. He said the answer was obvious. He had four of the worst tires I ever saw, they were completely bald, nicked, damaged. I told him, your tires are shot, they need to be replaced. He asked me, how much does it cost? He told him $500. Guy said, I can't do it. I just lost 40% of my retirement funds in the last two months. And he got in the car, and he drove away with those four shot tires. These are the kind of hard choices and sacrifices people are making every single day, and yet we as their elected representatives aren't making those tough choices. We are here to do a job, a very serious job, in an unprecedented time. And I don't think we could afford to go away and say, we only did half the job, especially knowing we have so very much more to do in the next eight months. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Marfer, Representative Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I might, a few questions to the proponent of the bill.
Please prepare your questions, sir. Representative Merrill, please be prepared. Frame your questions, sir, and you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I thought when I heard the opening comments, that the gentle lady explained that the deficit that we are currently at is somewhere around $600 million. Is that correct through you, Mr. Speaker?
Representative Merrill.
Through you, Mr. Speaker, yes, that is correct.
Representative Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, I just, I've briefly taken a look at the fiscal note here for this, for this language, and it appears to me that the cuts total something on the order of $14.5 million through you. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker?
Representative Merrill.
No, that is not correct. Through you, Mr. Speaker, I believe you're looking at the difference between the cuts made by the governor's plan and our plan before you tonight. Through you, Mr. Speaker, actually, the amount of cuts, if you disregard the revenue increases and all the other things that get us to the $300 million number, the actual amount of cuts is $71,833,000. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I thank the gentle lady for her answer. So, give or take a couple of percent, we're looking at about 10% of what our total deficit stands today. And as I understand it, at the time the governor began the process of calling us in, the deficit has actually increased something on the order of $265 million, give or take which agency you ask. Is that correct through you, Mr. Speaker?
Representative Merrill.
Yes, through you, Mr. Speaker, that is correct. That's the difference between what the deficit is now and the plan that the governor put before us. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I do thank the gentle lady for her answers. Mr. Speaker, I, I've had an opportunity to take a look at some information that was provided to us at a public hearing not so long ago, both by OPM and OFA, and I guess I would carry the comments made by Minority Leader Cofaro out a little bit farther. As I see the deficit as it currently stands, it appears as though we're looking at a $2.5 billion deficit in FY '10, $3.2 in FY '11, and around about the time, some of us are going to try and stand for reelection, somewhere around $3.2 in FY '12. So it looks to me, given the current track that we're on, we're going to be something approaching $9 billion in the next three years. Now, I do agree that there are a lot of things that can happen between now and then, but what I would offer is that the majority of what we are going to do today has to do with the appropriation of new money. I don't think there's anybody in the state of Connecticut that is going to think we've done our job. I think everybody in the state of Connecticut is waiting for us to do our job, and the concern that I have is, what we are going to do tonight is mask, mask the problem. We're going to take $157 million from the federal government, $40 million in one time, as Representative Cofaro said, in tax amnesty, and that's pretty much it. And so we're going to leave here, and people are going to say tomorrow, well, you did something. And I'm not so sure that we really did anything, other than put this question off to another day. Not only are we going to put it off to another day, we're going to put it off to another legislature. We're going to take brand-new legislators that have run for office, and we're going to ask them to deal with this growing problem, instead of doing it ourselves. Mr. Speaker, we are not looking at this the right way. We are misreading where we are. We are bleeding financially in the state of Connecticut, and we're handing out Band-Aids. I think if I take the total amount that we have increased the deficit between the 30th and today, I may be wrong, but it's about $5 million a day, I think, we're upside down. We can't cover that by introducing new revenue. The federal government can't cover that by introducing new revenue. We need structural changes in our budget. Mr. Speaker, during some discussions, in fact, during the public hearing, I suggested that perhaps we should take a look at our sessional employees that we're going to invite here in the next two months. We're going to actually bring new employees on in the state of Connecticut, ladies and gentlemen. They don't currently exist, they're not currently an obligation, and you know what? Four months from now, when we can't pay our bills and we lay them off, they're going to cost us unemployment. But that's what we're going to do, because that's what we've always done. That's what we've always done. I think it's time we made some significant changes, and I'm sorry to say that this is not going to be a significant change, and I think the minority leader would tell you that right at the as of this moment, I don't know how I'm going to vote on this, but I'm that concerned that this is sending the wrong message to the people of Connecticut, my constituency and yours, that don't know when their next job is if they're a carpenter, don't know whether their next job is if they're a plumber, people they could always count on to give them work are saying, thank you, we're going to wait until the spring sometime. Lumber companies, sitting there with inventory, trucks idle because we're not doing anything. And that's what we're doing here, we're not doing anything. So I'm going to listen to what other people's comments are, but I really do not think this is a fix at all. This is just masking the problem. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Karen Marfer, Representative Delgado.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think everybody's sitting in this room who has just worked as hard as we've all worked to seek reelection, seeing the numbers that come out, we certainly appreciate it. And I don't think anybody on either side of the aisle has any less of a sense of responsibility to what faces this institution and every citizen in the state going forward. I think that's what the minority leader was highlighting, and sometimes I wonder, these numbers, as they keep on rolling out, and particularly those of us who are on the Appropriations and Finance Committees, both the public meetings and the further private reports that we continually get, become so enormous that you, they're, when Representative Cofaro was saying $2.6 billion and $3.3 billion, it is almost unimaginable, even for those of us who work with these issues every day, to appreciate how, not just devastating that number, what that represents, but how much of a challenge, a legitimate challenge, it's going to be for the legislature and ultimately for all the people of Connecticut, to get our arms around this and to do what we have to do, to do our job. I do have some broader thoughts, but for right now, I just wanted to ask a few questions, if I might, Mr. Speaker, through you, to the proponent of...
Please frame your questions, sir, and please prepare the question. You may proceed, sir.
Thank you. There are a number of subtle changes to what the governor had proposed as her deficit mitigation plan that were highlighted by the esteemed Chair of Appropriations. Amongst those were some discussions that we had as we were talking about the potential bill before us today. One of those had to do with the clean diesel buses. And my recollection was that the governor's proposal that we originally were considering appropriately reflected the fact that only two communities in this state had actually applied for that program, and that the reason why there was all of the existing monies left in that account was that in order to implement that program, it came with other strings and other costs to municipalities in order to implement the program. I think that was acknowledged in the discussions that we had had about it, and was a rationale to say, look, if, in fact, it's not going to be a program that is practically accessible to municipalities because of the additional costs they would have to bear, then it makes sense, under these times, to then reallocate the money. In other words, use it to mitigate the deficit. Also knowing that when the bill, the clean diesel bus bill was originally put in place, it was understood that let's do this program over a course of one or two years, because the technology has evolved to an extent that as these fleets of buses, as they are routinely, as they go through their normal cycle of replacement, the new technology will already be in place in the new buses that come on board. So that begs the question, if in fact, the reality is that these funds are not being accessed by municipalities because they have the extra burdens that it would require, and if in fact, we know that these fleets and the new technology is going to mean that the clean diesel technology will be available, therefore making our children and all of our air healthier to breathe, then why is it not reasonable to take the funds that we know are not being utilized? I didn't understand the rationale, if I might, through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Merrill.
Yes, through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, you and I have had discussions about this in these meetings, about the cuts that were proposed by the governor, and initially, it did appear that the reason that we were removing the funding from that line was because the money could not be expended this year. I would first say that there was an enormous amount of concern in our caucus about this particular cut, so I went back to the Department of Environmental Protection and to some of the advocates who had been talking about this particular program, to try to ascertain why the funds had not been expended and what the problem was, because we do know that the largest number of buses, in fact, something like 80% of the bus fleet of school buses in the state are the older buses, and they do need to be retrofitted, and there is a great deal of evidence that the fumes are getting into the cabins, and that these devices, which were envisioned in the legislation, which, there's an actual cost in the legislation, which, to some degree, I think prevented some of the implementation of the program, but there were actual costs that turned out to be incorrect in the legislation. But it also assumed that the school districts would contribute to the cost of these devices going on the buses. And on further examination, it turns out that quite a number of school districts did apply for the money. Initially, we thought that there were not that many applying for the dollars. It turns out there were about 15 districts who did apply for the dollars. DEP did a wonderful job of getting some federal money in and was able to pay for some of these, but because the legislation limited the amount that could be paid for the devices, it seemed to limit the amount of money that could be out there for the school districts. So our thinking now is that with a small adjustment in the legislation in January, we would be able to expend the money. There are school districts who have applied for it, and people, many people in our caucus felt it was a very, very important issue, a one-time cost for devices that cost somewhere on the order of between $2,000 and $8,000 per bus, a one-time cost that should not be deferred. So we made a calculation, and we did still retain some of the cut, but we also put some of the money back with a reasonable estimate of what could be expended this year with that small change in the legislation. And I would say this is a... And I would say this is a very good example of the kind of careful work that needs to be done before we do whole-scale cutting of items, even when they look like they are just one-time appropriations, they sometimes do very important things. And this just struck us as one of those things that needed to occur. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I thank the gentle lady for her answer. And I think it does, in fact, highlight the two things, the care that needs to be understood, that's our job. The response I heard was that, I didn't, it did not say no, Representative Delgado, you're incorrect, that, in fact, these, for all the good intention of the program, it did not roll out the way the legislature had intended for some very practical reasons. Those are also the kinds of things we need to look at, and I appreciate the response that the, I guess it is the intention of a future legislature, and I know the gentle ladies, we will be in a position to make sure that such bills might get introduced and heard, but to make changes. But the point here is, is that we could go through many of these issues, and we're going to have to deal with this this year, we all understand. There are many things that we would like to do. There are many, you know, wonderful types of issues that every one of us bring to this chamber that are important, that we think, you know, make a contribution to society. We're not in that position today, as we'll hear and hear and hear. We have to deal with the absolute reality that we're faced, and as the minority leader mentioned earlier, when we're sitting here talking about maybe allocating an amount of money to retrofit these buses that we know are going to, in the not very long term, are going to evolve, meaning as the capital programs roll out and the buses are replaced, those fleets are replaced, that they are going to, of course, have the cleaner technology already built into them. Those are decisions we have to weigh. You know, this may only look like $4 or $5 million on the face of it, but there are an awful lot of those kinds of decisions that we're going to have to make. I think as we look at the bill before us, there are a lot of those issues or a lot of those items that have details within them, and I think we should take it as a responsibility of ourselves to look in, look under the hood, so to speak, to use the issue we just dealt with, and understand those. I won't go through them at length today, I think there's some broader debate and discussion that needs to happen, but I also want, I did want to ask one further question. There is, in the bill, it's my understanding, amongst a number of things it would do, it would require, or speed up the requirement, that the Commissioner of Social Services put forward a plan for medical interpreters, make it actually part of the Medicaid plan. And I understand that it has been the intention of the legislature in the past to do such things. But again, to the, to the gentle lady's point in the earlier, let's understand what this means. By apps, by making these services part of our Medicaid plan, even as the OLR report notes, we make them an absolute entitlement. So while we will capture revenue from the federal government reimbursement for half of those costs, we will also be building in some absolute expenses, a lot less flexibility. So it might be the general intention of the legislature in balancing all the issues that we have to, that it is our responsibility to provide medical interpreter services to, particularly to certain vulnerable populations. It's one thing to balance that priority, it's another thing, as the legislation does before us, to build it in as an entitlement and an expense. And I think that, that also needs to be understood. If I could ask for some clarification, through you, Mr. Speaker.
Ms. Merrill.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, that is correct. This, this item is achieved through making it part of a Medicaid plan, although there are important differences, I believe, between making it part of a medical plan and part of an administrative plan, and not, it does not necessarily build that in the same way. But you're absolutely correct in that it does achieve some federal dollars would come to match that service, and there, there has been an intention to provide these interpreters in any event, so this is just a way to provide that service without having the state pick up the entire cost. Yes, we will have many debates about what kinds of services we will or will not be providing under many programs, and I guess I'd just take this opportunity to say, I fully agree with the numbers that everyone's been talking about. I'm not sure I'd agree that it's entirely unprecedented, this $5 or $6 billion that we're looking at, because as I recall, back in 1991, there was an even higher percentage of the budget in deficit. That is not to minimize it, and that is certainly not to minimize the job we have ahead of us, but I think some of the things that you are asking questions about tonight illustrate the fact that it is extremely difficult to deal with these sorts of policy questions when we are not in session. We are not going to cut our way out of this crisis any more than we're going to receive $5 billion in federal dollars to get ourselves out of this problem. But every cut we make impacts real people in the same way that every dollar we spend impacts real people. And there may indeed be greater needs in some area in the state as this recession or whatever it is unfolds. So I'm very mindful of the fact that when we're in a situation like this, where there's a specific plan before us, we're not looking at the whole state budget, we're not looking at the entire picture of what the possibilities are. And that's why I think we've taken a very cautious approach to these things, and I would rather, myself, debate such issues as this Medicaid plan and the inclusion or not of medical interpreters for people who would otherwise perhaps cost us more money if we don't get them the appropriate services, for example. I would rather have that be a process through the public hearings and the process we go through in our regular session, and that's, that's going to be a lot of what we debate next session, and it's going to be very hard work, and I have no illusions about that, and I don't think anyone else in this chamber does either. But I think it has to be extremely carefully achieved, and I think this is another example where we are trying to respond to the plan the governor put before us, where she had a cut to that entire program, and we are trying to achieve a savings by bringing in some federal dollars and yet still maintain some semblance of that program under Medicaid. Now, it may very well happen that during the next session, we will have this debate in the Appropriations Committee or the Human Services Committee, and there will be public hearings to decide whether or not this is an appropriate service, given our current fiscal situation, but this is the best we could do under the circumstances. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Delgado.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will not have any further specific questions on the bill before us, and I'm sure there's going to be some further discussion, but I have to comment that, let us all remember that we're not talking about some new budget and some new framework. What is here before us today is a document that's very familiar with us, to us. It's the budget that this legislature adopted for the biennium, and the potential changes that we must make because of the deficit that we know is here today. We debated this two years ago, and when we adopted the budget, we certainly had hearings and extensive consideration about this budget that this bill seeks to amend. So this should be a subject that we are very intimately familiar with. So nothing that is, you know, oh, my gosh, we have to consider some extraordinary new policy initiative, as we are certainly going to be faced with with the new budget for the biennium. When I hear words like caution, I understand caution. I think the gentle lady understands the seriousness that I and others take to, you know, specific decisions. But they, they make me afraid because the reality isn't going to get any easier, folks. The time is now for us to actually take it up, roll up our sleeves, and do something about it. I think that's what every citizen of this state is expecting of us. I hope to hear that accomplished to a greater extent during the discussions tonight. Thank you.
Karen Marfer, Representative Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have a couple of questions to the proponent of the bill.
Please find your questions, sir, Ms. Merrill. Please prepare, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In Section 5 of this bill, there is a transfer proposed of $5 million from the Citizens' Elections Fund. And my question is, is that surplus money that's in the fund currently, through you, Mr. Speaker?
Ms. Merrill.
Yes, through you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, it is an estimated surplus in that fund at this time. That does not include potential additions due to monies being returned unspent. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I'm not sure if the Chairwoman of Appropriations, whatever the answer is, but do you know how much money is currently in this fund, through you, Mr. Speaker?
Representative Merrill.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. The approximate estimate of the amount currently in the fund after the expenditures from the just-past election in November, it's an estimate still because all costs are not in and all dollars have not been returned and so forth, is approximately $40 million. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And does that $40 million, is that before or after this proposed transfer?
Ms. Merrill.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. That would be before this transfer. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and do we know what's projected to be in the fund in the next fiscal year, through you, Mr. Speaker?
Through you, Mr. Speaker. I, first, I have to correct what I said, which was, from memory, actually, I'm now looking at the sheet that OFA prepared, and actually, the '09 estimate of the amount in the fund is $51 million. And I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Speaker, could you repeat your question?
Representative Hamzey, if you would, please.
Thank you, certainly, Mr. Speaker. My first question was, how much is in the fund currently, and how much is projected to be in the fund in the next fiscal year?
Yes, through you, Mr. Speaker.
Ms. Merrill.
Thank you. Sorry. Through you, Mr. Speaker. At the end of FY '10, there is estimated, assuming we put in the $15 million that is slated to go into the fund each year and the administrative cost of $2.3 million, there will be approximately $60 million in the fund. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Ms. Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate the responses and the answers given. Mr. Speaker, as has been eloquently and consistently pointed out, these are extremely difficult times. And for members of the public who are not aware, we do have a system of taxpayer financing of political campaigns that we just went through in this past election cycle. there are a whole bunch of public grants that were given to candidates who chose to participate and who met certain requirements. And the jury's out about whether or not it accomplished its goal, but the fact of the matter is that we have some extremely difficult times that we're experiencing now, and extremely trying times that we're going to be experiencing in the near future. So trying, in fact, that it reminds me of an old Run DMC song called "Hard Times." And it's with that in mind that I'd like to offer the following amendment, LCO Number 7067. May I ask the clerk to call, and I'd be allowed to summarize?
The chambers stand at ease until we can locate this, please. Chamber, please come back to order. Clerk, please call LCO Number 7067. It should be designated House Amendment Schedule A.
LCO Number 76, six, I'm, excuse me, LCO Number 7067, House A, offered by Representative Hamzey. Offered by Representatives Cofaro, Hamzey, and Claritas.
Representative, please leave the chamber to summarize the amendment. Is there objection on summarization? If not, sir, you may proceed with your summarization.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is actually a very simple amendment. As we know, based on the office that you run for, there are certain thresholds that you're required to meet in exchange for receiving taxpayer money to run your political campaign. For governor, current law is if you have a primary, you get $1.25 million. For a general election, you'd be eligible to receive $3 million. For the other constitutional offices, if you qualify for a primary and you meet the eligibility, you are the recipient of $375,000 for a primary and $750,000 for a general election. For a state senate race, if you meet the thresholds that are required, you're eligible to receive $85,000 for a general election. For state rep, you're eligible to receive $25,000. And this is all money that's written from the state treasury. What this amendment proposes to do is reduce those grants by half. So we are not having a policy discussion as to the merits of the program. What we are going to have is a discussion of our ability to pay, given the fiscal crisis that we find ourselves. And I move adoption.
President, chamber's adoption, House Amendment Schedule A. Will you remark further on the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. According to the fiscal note prepared by the Office of Fiscal Analysis, this amendment will save the state $7.5 million in this current fiscal year. And— will save the state $7.5 million in this current fiscal year and $7.5 million in the next fiscal year. I believe it's the responsible thing to do, especially considering the economic times that we find ourselves in. And I would urge the members of this chamber to vote for this amendment, and I would ask that when the vote is called, it be by a roll call.
Congressman Chambers, a roll call, if all of us are favorable, a favorable roll call, please, in my saying aye.
Aye!
I'd say, well, it has been mad when the voice has taken, it'll be taken by roll. Karen Moore further on the amendment. Representative Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just a question through you to a proponent of the amendment.
Question, madam, please prepare, sir. Please proceed, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As I understand it, the savings for this year in this bill is achieved by not placing in one of the payments into the Citizens' Elections Fund. Is that the case? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
It would be one-half of the scheduled deposit that's due to be made into the Citizens' Elections Fund. Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And through you, do you know when exactly that deposit is scheduled to be made? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
It would be before the end of the fiscal year.
Senator Merrill.
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Speaker, is there, is there just one payment remaining? Through you, Mr. Speaker, so that would be the entire amount that's to be saved, is the $7.5 million? Through you, Mr. Speaker.
Representative Hamzey.
Mr. Speaker, I'm not sure of when the exact check is written from the treasurer to the Citizens' Elections Fund. However, the savings would be realized of, the savings of $7.5 million would be realized in this fiscal year.
Senator Merrill.
Through you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much for your answers to those questions. I was asking those questions because we had considered some of the same questions in terms of achieving savings from the fund. We just achieved the savings and took money out of the fund in the amount of $5 million to achieve some savings rather than not having the amount of money go in. But that being said, I would speak in opposition to the amendment. Mr. Speaker, there are going to be many changes made during regular session. As I understand it, this bill would make savings based on not placing money into a fund, and the argument is that the fund has enough money in it now and therefore we should be putting less in it, and thereby, in '09 and '10, changing the amount of the grants that would be granted for future candidates in future elections. And that being the case, the impact for this year's deficit mitigation is only the amount that you're not placing in the fund through this mechanism. And while I think that's to be debated next year in terms of the amount of grants that we want to be giving to candidates, we have really just come off a very successful first iteration of this program. I think it has gone a long way in taking the need to raise money from private interests from candidates. I think it proved to be very successful. People went and got small donations from local residents to help them support their campaigns. They then received public funds. From what I understand, the program went extremely well. There was a hearing the other day that talked about some of the small adjustments one might make in the program. But that being said, from my observation, I would say that the program was an unqualified success this year. There is money left in the fund because I think we still are trying to ascertain exactly what will be needed to run elections in 2010 in particular, where we'll have a gubernatorial and several other statewide races. It's untested yet to see how much money would be needed to run those races, and we've run several scenarios where there could possibly be as much as a four-way primary in some of these races. So we really, we need to make a number of different assumptions based on exactly how much money we will be needing from this fund. For those reasons, we chose only to take a $5 million from this fund at this point. We were comfortable that the fund would still have enough money to maintain the viability of the program and to go into the year 2010 with enough money in the fund to make the program a success in that year as well. So for those reasons, I would suggest that this method of taking the $7.5 million out of the fund by simply not putting the money in to begin with is just sort of another version of the way we've done it. And as far as its impact this year, I don't think makes much difference one way or the other. I think we made a better assessment of what I would be comfortable with in terms of taking enough money out of that fund to keep it viable for the coming years. In the coming session, we may very well debate the efficacy of the program, but that would be for next year when we can have public hearings and talk about exactly how we see the viability of the program going forward. So I would ask my colleagues to vote against this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Karen Moore further. Representative Caffero.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the chamber, I stand in support of this amendment. $6.6 billion deficit, folks. We just came